Okay, guys, getting to be seven o'clock here, so let's get started. Call the meeting to order and let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got everybody here tonight, so that makes this quorum good there. Uh, let's see, approval of the minutes. Vance, you want to just briefly go through like the eleventh, when we just talked about that?
I certainly agree, Corey. We met on the eleventh, seven o'clock. All present except Mr. Korselman, who signed the pledge. The minutes from August 21, approved, consented, approved with the auditions. The regular agenda approved by Dave, second by Brian. Excuse me, a public forum was held regarding the 2018 budget. Mayor Peterson opened the forum at 7:05. There were approximately 60 people in attendance. The board decided that night that a second round of budget discussion will be held tonight, September 25th. Mayor Peterson closed the forum at 9:40. Jesse Castle presented the monthly police report noting no significant occurrences for the month. Onstead Twitchell, Mr. Croker asked for a second reading regarding the rezone of the Trent Mark property, accomplished by first motion from Sharon and second by Brian. Interstate engineering, Mr. Dolman presented an update on current projects. Change order for the Reline project approved by Brian, second by Dave. Change order for water looping approved by Sharon, second by Brian, all were in favor. Under portfolios, Sharon provided a discussion on the maintenance issues that are being neglected by the par board staff. She will present at the next board meeting to discuss. You're probably not going to do that tonight because there are meetings next door, but anyway. In addition, the minutes are not being presented timely and that really hasn't improved either. At least I haven't been receiving them. Brian congratulated Sharon on the wonderful job she did with Bean Days. Dave asked the board to approve the hiring of Matea Heisler as assistant city auditor. Brian first, Sharon second to approve. Matea started today at a yearly salary of $50,000. John absent, Corey no report, auditor no report. We adjourned at 9:05.
Vance?
Yes.
There, I think we need to adjust either, you have the, the public forum closed at 9:40 and then you have the meeting adjourned at 9:05, so there's a conflict with the times.
Oh, I think it concluded 7:40, right?
Most definitely.
No, I think it was eight, eight something.
Yeah, eight something.
Eight something, I don't know if it was 8:40, but it was eight something.
Okay, let me strike that change. Should we, is it 8:40 approximately then? Is that what you?
I don't know.
We'd have to go back and check the video.
Lucas, do you have minutes on that? Okay.
We went long.
It was eight, eight something. It was over and out.
Okay, I will make that change.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else got any?
No.
So can I get a motion to accept the minutes with the adjustment?
Can we do it, Mr. Corey? We do have the two special meetings as well during the meeting.
Okay, let's go ahead with those. Go through them all then. Get them all in here.
Which one do you want to go through?
Let's do September 11th. Excuse me, September 13th. Okay. Which we had a general discussion with Mr. Dolman regarding the dedication and the vacation of the plat at Deer Creek. All were in favor. That was a short meeting, we adjourned at 5:20.
I think it was five o'clock when we started though, wasn't it?
Yep.
The start time is five o'clock.
So noted.
Okay.
September 20th, special meeting. Dave made first motion to approve the proposed changes to the preliminary budget, which we are going to discuss tonight. The final budget for 2018 will be approved at the regular meeting to be held tonight, September 25th. All were in favor.
Make a motion to approve the agenda minutes were so noted. Time changes?
Changes.
One second.
Get a second, okay. We have Brian's motion, Sharon made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approves. Okay, the consent agenda, everybody have a chance to look through the bills?
Mr. Mayor, I do have two additions.
Okay.
That came in tonight. First of all, I have an invoice here from Crown Trophy regarding, um...
Name tags.
What is regarding?
Name tags.
Name tags, okay. Eighty-six, fifty-four. And the second item to add is Corey and I authorized Sharon quite some time ago to purchase a plat book, which I had never reimbursed her for, so it'll be Sharon may, $58. Jim, do I have all the pay requests in here?
Yeah, just the one.
Okay.
That's Kate, or the Hager one?
Yeah, $16,200.
Yep, right there.
There's a KPH one in there though, as well.
That's right here, yep, KPH.
Well, what project's that for?
2017 one?
No. I didn't submit any for this. That was for the last meeting, I think. We better double check that one.
Okay.
244, yeah.
Jim, you think that was in the last, that was in the last?
Was that the last one or what?
Yeah, I think that was the last one. We had one at the last meeting. Yeah, the only one I should have sent, I sent you was 2016.
Okay. So then why don't, uh... Well, let me check that one out.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, so does anybody else have any?
Yeah, question on the dust control on Wall Avenue. Is that our portion of it?
Yes, I had, Dave, I had a discussion with Jack.
Jack, yep.
And he has agreed to pay $1,000 toward that.
Okay.
So I haven't received those funds yet, but I...
So that's the full amount?
That is the full amount.
And then we'll get the $1,000 from Jack?
Yes.
We'll follow up with Jack?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I have no reason to think that he won't come through with that.
Yep.
But as we speak, he has not.
Okay.
All right. Dave, I do have one. Civic Plus, three-fourths of the way down there, that's an annual fee?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's right on time.
Okay.
Once a year.
Well, wait a minute, our subscription shouldn't be up until February, right?
The invoice came in this month.
Started a project, your first year, remember, you're going to have a project, the site would be set up, so there will be a few months of...
Oh, so we paid a portion for the first year and then this is the full?
No, you paid, you paid a whole year upfront.
But the, the, yeah, the year starts in October 1st though.
That's what, wherever the project started, yes.
Oh, okay.
So this is for...
Oh, that's right, we did start it in October.
Yep.
That's right. Okay.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
What should we approve, consent?
With the, you want to make a view?
Yeah, do we want to wait on the approval of this until we confirm the KPH item? Or do we approve everything?
With that exception.
Yeah, okay, let's just remove that then.
Because we're meeting next week again.
Yep.
With removal of the payment.
Can I get a second? Dave says a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving along. Okay, everybody has seen the general agenda, regular agendas we have here. Anybody got any changes or adds to it? We kind of went through all that. Can I get a motion to approve that agenda? All right, Brian makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I think John had her.
John?
Yep. So, down to the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving along. To the 2018 budget, I'll look for them, I'll open up the forum here for a public meeting and I'm going to turn this over to Brian because he did the nice pictures tonight and we had talked about all this, so I'll let him do the conversation tonight of what we came up with. Go ahead.
Yep, so what we're doing is we're, we went back and had another discussion last week about the budget for, actually it's 2017 property tax levy amount, but it's for the budget year 2018, so, so what we did out of that meeting, we went through and identified a few things that we could either postpone or just reduce the overall spend on the expenses. So a couple of things that we, that we went through and identified was that we were going to reduce the building and ground expenses by about 50 percent and some of that is postponing items or just saying, okay, we can, we can wait or do that another time or reduce the overall cost. And then the same thing with the equipment repairs, looking at possibly either leasing some of the equipment rather than purchasing. That would overall reduce the spend on some of the equipments and repairs. We reduced some of the office expenses, including some of the equipment. It wasn't as dramatic of a change, but it was a reduction and we reduced some of the miscellaneous expenses. There were no changes on the, on the revenue side in terms of, you know, the, from the budget perspective, you know, what could we do to drive more revenue? Nothing came out of that, so. Those are some of the things that we cut out of the budget. So overall, what that did is that trimmed about seventeen percent over what we had had. What we originally had from an expense, on this slide, you'll notice that it's essentially the expenses side because there really were no other changes on the revenue side. So original for 2017 budget, we had 700, 1,000, 100 for the expense and from the meeting last time, we had proposed 1,119,000 as a proposed budget. So what we did with the cuts, we brought that down to one, one million, just over one million, $1,008,000. So that, that translates to just over $100,000. So you look at the difference in that spend, it's about, you know, seventeen, twenty percent almost in that ballpark. The things that didn't change were going to continue with the staffing that we had planned, so that would stay with the hiring that we had proposed before and take the changes out of the equipment and those other items that I mentioned before. Okay? So with that, just to put that in perspective, what we had, so based on the current rates, current rates, it translates to about $164 per $100,000 value of your property. So if your home value is around $100,000, today you're paying about $164 in city tax. So it's, don't think of that as the overall property tax amount, this is just the portion for the city tax, that's what you're paying today. The way we had originally proposed, that would go to just over $311 with the original proposal that we had. So there, again, it, it, that was, that's significantly increased, but again, you know, dollar amount, it's, it's a fairly small dollar, so the percentage goes up quite, quite high. So it would have gone up 311.94 per $100,000 home value. Under the new current proposed budget plan that we had assembled with the cuts, we brought that down, so it dropped about $50. So it really, you know, translates, so 269.96 per $100,000 home value. So what that means, if you have a $200,000 home in the example here that we listed down below there, if you have $100,000 in value, your amount will go up about $105, $106. If you have a $200,000 home, it'll go up about 211.92. So there's, there's really two line items that changed dramatically this year on your property tax. One is this, you know, this amount that increased and the other removal of the 12 percent state tax credit that was in place before. So both, it was kind of a double whammy that hit us this time. So that portion, we have no control, we can't, we can't do anything about that because that's a state, state amount. So in essence, the, the, with a new tax rate, the new, it translates to a 64 percent increase, so it sounds like a large percentage because that's what you're going to see when you get the updated tax statement from the county, but it's, it's a pretty significant decrease from what we had before, so that we can say, okay, it's, we could still fund the priorities that we feel are really important. I mean, believe me, there were some long heated discussions around what we should cut, could cut, and what priorities were we could, we could scale back on. But that's, that's kind of where that landed. Okay? So this slide is very similar to what we showed last time. You'll just notice that the last bullet, the last point here is 59. So the mill rate going forward is 59 instead of, I think we had 63...
No, it was almost 70.
It was 69, it was like 69 before, right?
69, 32.
So it brought it down about 10, 10 mils from what it was. So it's, it's up about 13, 23 mils. It's up about 23 mils, so it's still a pretty good increase, but it's, it's funding the priorities. Okay, so that was, that's a quick upshot. Any questions? Anyone wants to bring up?
What are the two staffing positions?
Okay, please go up to the, please, thank you.
Council, what are the two staffing positions that you have on there?
So the two staffing positions consists of a bringing in on the second quarter, so starting in April, a city administrator and that through the rest of the year, and then the second staffing position is a part-time city planner and/or at some point in the year turning that into a full-time city planner. So those are the two specific positions that we have outlined in the budget.
And what, what is the salary level you're looking at?
Salary level for the city administrator, we budgeted $85,000. We have about 20 percent on top of that related to insurances and benefits and those types of things. The city planner, a budget is about $70,000 for that, but if we contract that, because we don't want to bring out a full-time one in the beginning, say we contract that part-time, that is a higher dollar value per hour because you're paying hourly.
That's all the questions I got.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions?
I just had some questions on some of the increases because they're kind of high level. For the, first question is that 40K for the city staff tax insurance, there wasn't anything listed last year and now there is, is that taken out of something else?
Correct. So if you look at the insurance line that says $20,000, the two of them, I wanted to break it out so we could show it, and actually in the previous budget it was $70,000, so we brought that down 10,000 based on our...
Okay, so that was just split out of the insurance?
Yep, just split out so that they're separate.
What's the increase for the 35,000 for attorney?
That is just really a lot of what we're spending with the attorney related to operations of the city, whether it be ordinance reviews, whether it be legal fees related to any other situations that we have to do. It's just gone up, our budget last year just was not to the level that it needed to be, so.
And plus they're handling all the paperwork, you know, for our plat previews and because when you go file them, I mean, there's just all the different paperwork that's involved with that.
How about the 21,000 for publishing? What does that cover?
So that covers not only publishing in the, in the paper in terms of legal things, it also covers the horse happenings that you're getting. So because we've increased the content related to that, that has increased those publishing fees a little bit.
Have you thought of doing like not in color or an opt-in? Because I'm sure since we have it on the website, I mean, we've got it how many places?
Right, so our next, our next option that we're looking to do is going electronic with that and like you said, opting in to get it paper.
Yeah, because I'm sure some people are still going to want it because they don't want to look on the internet, but I mean, $21,000 increase is a big increase.
We'd love to be able to reduce that by pushing, using more electronic, but yeah, we're not quite there yet. Can we get there and potentially save some money? Absolutely.
But you're, you're using the exact approach we want to take, which is an opt-in, so they have to tell us they want.
How about the office supplies, 12,000 for that?
So some of that was just equipment that we might have to buy related to those two employees, so you have to buy a computer and those types of things, it's not a significant amount. Second is just supplies that we do use related to the city and then we do have a couple of computer things that we wanted to do, but we had taken out of significantly other things that we wanted to look at related to some upgrades in some areas.
Okay. Have you, have you looked at getting rid of the tax abatement? I mean, is there a reason why you're not doing that?
So if we think about taking away the tax abatement, if you look at the dollars and cents to it, so to us as a city, $100,000 equates to how much taxes did you say? Basically a hun, uh...
About 200.
$296. So that's 150,000 for a person, so that's about, what do we want to say, 200 and, or 335 dollars?
Right.
So if you add that across even 20 or 30 houses, it's not a significant amount on our budget that we don't have.
Well, when you're talking the amount of growth that you're talking about, it's going to be a lot more than 20, 30 houses. You've got how many, what, 400 unit development out here?
No, we only have 105 plat, right? 105 platted for...
Something like that. There's only, we haven't had any...
But you've got all the stuff from the school that will be and everything else, so I mean, that'll add up quick.
In some future, in some future potential, it could be into, the side of it will be as, as our city grows, the percentage related to that will be very small. It will be probably less than 5 percent or more of our budget.
I'm just saying, you know, if you keep delaying it and delaying it and delaying it, all that development's already going to be built by the time you decide to take out, take it out, and then you're not going to get anything for it. That's the problem is, is yes, it may not be a lot right now, but if you keep delaying it and delaying it and delaying it, every year that you delay it, you get how many more houses that get added into it, that now you can't take that away from them because they're already there.
I understand. So there's, there's lots of different things we have to look at related to realtors, related to what it'll do to our city and also the actual dollar amount it loses, so. But we haven't said no.
No, but we got to have more discussions about it. There's some more people we need to have included in that conversation and if that's not going to be a knee jerk decision we have to make, we got to think that one through because that's got some other implications beyond us.
Yeah, I mean, when you look at it, you're talking, in the last meeting you were talking, we're going to double in size. So, I mean, that, those numbers will add up quick and with that school, it, a lot of growth is going to happen real quick. Well, if you wait two years, you just missed all that growth. So, I mean, at that point, then you're going to say, well, we already missed it all, so there's no point in getting rid of it now because we're not going to gain anything. You know, it just seems like you're just going to delay it and delay it and delay it and it's always going to be, ah, we're not going to save anything, so.
We still have to make sure it's a good deal for, I mean, I know it sounds good on paper, we just got to make sure there's no long-term consequences with it before we do that. That's why there's got to be more discussion about it. Okay? Thank you.
So here's one of my key concerns that I'm seeing from the last meeting, watching it online afterwards. Everybody that came up and spoke was, well, not everybody, 90 percent of who came up and spoke pretty much said, you're making me choose to stay here and go bankrupt or to move. You're forcing me out of my house. New homeowners, the retired people, so are you realizing the number of people you're going to lose versus the number of people you're going to gain by this massive growth? I mean, have you taken that into account?
Yes. I mean, we've had conversations about it, I mean, it's not an easy decision.
I'm just, I'm wondering, how is it benefiting you when you're going to lose more potentially than you're going to gain?
Is that true though? Do we know that for a fact?
Well, have you seen what the real estate market is doing right now? It's not doing what it was six months ago. The people that just bought their houses, they're not going to get for what they just spent.
Okay, but that could happen, that could happen two, five years from now too, we're still going to be in this, but I mean, it's...
So then, why can't this be a little more gradual? I know you cut 17 percent, that's, that's a great start, but...
We've gone through it, honestly, we are, we, we cut back further, we can't go any lower now. It's one of the things where we've gone through this, I don't know how many hours now we've spent on this, guys.
Thank you.
A lot of time. The situation we're up against right now is some sins from the past have come forward. We've got to get back on track with where we're at with stuff. We've got older equipment, we've got some things that we're not doing right now as a city that we need to start doing. How long do we delay this any later? How long, how long is it before we upgrade the equipment? How long is it before we do some of these maintenance upgrades before we have to start doing more things?
You know, I understand that point, but then I look and see that last year there was no audit. If these were issues before, why weren't we looking into it? Why weren't we digging in?
It's not that they were auditable, that's, when I say sins of the past, what I'm talking about, there's just some things that we didn't purchase. We put off, we kicked some things down the road a little bit longer and now they're coming here. Do we keep kicking some of these things down the road? Like the maintenance is what I'm getting at, of these vehicles and things like that that we have out there, of the buildings. With the roads, people don't like the gravel roads. Well, if you want to try and do something, well, we won't be able to do them now, but we're trying to plan for the future that we can do some of these things, how we could fix some of this stuff. And we're not doing it all right away, we're going to be spreading this out. Actually, we're going a little longer on some of this stuff than we probably should, but we're trying to spread it out. We're trying to come up with what's the best way to handle this. Yes, I know that the taxes are going up and some people, it's, it's going to hurt, but on the same end, when do we start realizing that we have to fix some of this stuff? When do we move forward with it?
I agree. And one other comment from the last meeting is you said that the majority of your equipment is leased.
No, no, we want to lease.
You want to lease?
We do not, yep, we take big purchases.
So how, do you have a breakdown of how that's more beneficial than a purchase?
Because first of all, you pay less over a period of time. Second is versus us buying equipment and running it forever and making our efficiency decrease because we're using older equipment that is not as capable as the newer equipment. Over time, we can get more efficient equipment, which makes us more efficient with our current resources versus having to use, so give you an example. Our water, our street cleaner is over 20 some years old. There's, there's over $10,000 to $12,000 that needs to be fixed on it. It doesn't have a watering system, so when our guys go out and actually clean the streets, there's dust kicked up all over. It takes them over three weeks to do that because they're trying to not get all that dust kicked up. If we had a newer machine, we could get that done, say, in two to three days and we could actually do it two to three times a year versus once. So we're more efficient at those types of things.
I guess, at my previous home in Horace, I never saw the street swept, so.
So those are types of things that we want to make sure that we're doing well.
I think it would be beneficial to see kind of a breakdown of like the leasing versus the, I understand what you're saying, I just think having that visual aid out there would be highly recommended in my opinion, because more people are visual than just hearing it.
And it's to identify the stuff that would be more beneficial to lease. Not all of it will be, but I mean, there are things out there, some of our bigger equipment that is probably...
Plus, we're also not having to all lay as much cash upfront, so let's say a snow truck that's $150,000, we can cash flow that at $2,500 a month for five to seven years versus a big outlay at one point.
I just, I think the breakdown of things, getting that visual out for, for the citizens is going to be more helpful. It's going to help them see what that $20,000 office supply line item is for. You know, it's, it's hard for people to necessarily go, oh, you know, two computers and printers and all that adds up to it.
And that's fair.
We're working really hard to try and get more information out there and publish it, we're just, it's a lot of work, right? So we're trying to, we're trying to get that, with the more content asked, you know, if, if there's things you're looking for, you know, there's a, there's a site on the web, you know, a place on the website that posts, hey, I'd like to see XYZ information, you know, ask those questions, request that, and we can look at pulling it together.
It's just, it's something that coming into this large of an increase should have maybe been considered prior to putting it out there, you know, giving more of that information. I, I just, from my viewpoint, to give the most information possible is going to make your battle a lot easier.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, I disagree.
Thank you.
Good point.
I may have a little bit different viewpoint. I kind of agree with a lot of the positions we need to staff, so I know I disagree with I may have a little bit different viewpoint, I kind of agree with a lot of the positions we need to staff, so, I know I disagree with a lot of people, but that kind of stuff I see as we needing and agreeing on the breakdown of the budget, that, that would be great to see, because somebody who lives on a gravel road doesn't have any of the street cleaning, city lights, any of that, I don't know what I get. You know, yes, I can say, okay, the cop drives down my street three times a day, I see that, but I don't know what else am I truly paying for? The one question I have, as we look at getting this new equipment, leasing it, that kind of stuff, are we gonna look at training for the guys that we have? Because from what I see, they try their best, but they don't know how to run the blade. You know, they come down our street, they don't get to the edges of the street, there's still piles running, I mean, my husband can go out with a tractor and do that. So, you know, we get all this great stuff, but do we get the training for them that they need, is my concern.
So on the, on the grading itself, um, because of our equipment is not up to the specifications, we need to really do a good job, we are going to look at contracting that. We actually have somebody that would ma- would be able to do it, that already does the, the rest of the township roads, that would do a, a, a good job, and we would set a standard.
He's got the better equipment.
Yeah, and set a standard, set a standard he has to do.
I'm, we're fully happy with that, because we drive down a very, a road every day.
Um, but yes, and, um, training in relation to, say, snow removal and those types of things, the state does offer it on a yearly basis, and we are trying to go further in getting them involved in that.
Thank you.
Yep, good question.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments that they wanna bring up at this time? Okay, otherwise I'm gonna close the public meeting. Vance?
We'll be on your December, December, yeah, comes out December. I have, I have till October seventh, seventh or the tenth to submit the final budget. I've submitted the preliminary, but now with these changes, I have to do it over again, and that's certified to the county auditor by November fourth, and about mid-December, you'll get your final, final.
But it's paid a year in arrears, so in other words, the twenty eighteen budget, you'll see on your twenty nine, in twenty nineteen for taxes due that year.
We'll see it, we'll pay this in February.
We'll see it, right, yeah. This, we'll see if this come here.
February.
This February.
Yeah, yep.
I have that.
Yep. Bill, Sharon, it's, it's now.
Yeah, so I have it back.
Right, you're wanting to get in February, yeah, your February's payment will be for this budget.
If you have a mortgage, it'll be taken out in March and October. If you own your home, of course, you have to pay that, I believe it's February twelfth.
I have a, have a question.
Yes, Tim.
So, on this, uh, how do you get that?
You didn't get a letter from the county?
No.
Oh, oh, sure you did.
No, I didn't.
Tim? Oh, well. Do you, well, first of all, I think the reason that you didn't, please correct me if I'm wrong, but you're under a veteran's disability, you don't pay real estate taxes, correct? That's probably why you didn't get that. Is it true that you're under a veteran's disability?
Well, I'm fifty percent.
Okay, I, I, I'm thinking. Okay, I think that might be the issue there. I don't know the answer to that, but I'd be glad to call the county auditor for you and find out.
I think you should be able to contact county auditor, too, and say, I did not receive this, and they'd send it to you.
I'm thinking that your tax bill is probably less than a hundred dollars. Okay. Why don't you, why don't you stop over to my office tomorrow and I'll look it up for you, how about that? Okay, all right, we'll do that.
All right, have you guys got any questions on anything on this?
I just, anybody else have any other questions, we're more than open to, yeah, please.
So, I'm just wondering, why do we need a full-time city planner? Why can't we hire this part-time for now? And look towards the future at getting a full-time city planner? The administrator job, I think that one's probably maybe beneficial, but as far as a city planner, I don't see us being that big where we need somebody full-time for that.
We might get a part-time person, sorry, but here's the thing. Part-time city planners are kinda hard to find, we might have to go contract with them, and that would be what we would probably do, part-time, contract with them. See where it goes and see what we're up against, and then maybe work into it later. I just wanna make sure we're planning for it, so that if we do start to have to move with things a little quicker, that we are ready for it. But I would, I have no problem going to a contract basis and then ramp it up, if and when we need to. Okay.
That's also a position we've been trying to hire for the last two years. And we've called it different things, we called it a building department manager, we've called it, we've had multiple names for that position. But essentially, it's the same position with a different name, but we've been working on this, and Mr. Prossman, you can.
The other thing, I'll just interject here, we want this fellow to work with this, uh, planning and zoning department as well. I mean, that's part of what this is about, is to help them, um, with the planning and zoning issues, and then getting some of these things laid out, so we know where things are supposed to be in town. Because right now, some of that stuff is out of date, and that's what we're trying to do, is get these things up to date. Like I said, now that we know where the school's going, that changed a lot of stuff, especially up in that part of the, the city. So now it's trying to make sure that we get that done correctly, and then again, working with planning and zoning to make sure that our planning, or zoning regulations are maintained. Okay. Thank you.
Is there a need for both planning and zoning, or, and this city planner?
I'll let Russ answer that one for you.
Can you repeat that question to Russ for us, please?
He wants to know if there's a reason for both planning and zoning and the city planner. Uh, the answer to your question is, yes. I will tell you that right, that I've been begging this council for a planner for quite a while. Uh, because with the growth that we're having, frankly, planning and zoning is in over its head. We need some, uh, uh, more experience. We don't wanna learn on the job with the kind of growth that the city is looking at. What the planner brings in, uh, whoever they're going to either, uh, lease isn't the term, but.
Contract.
Contract, whoever they're gonna contract with, it's going to be someone with experience. Right now, we actually have a short-term contract through our engineering company with a planner, who comes in and, uh, has had some, uh, great advice for us. If you think about how, uh, much fun it is getting into town at, uh, or heading north at, uh, seven-thirty in the morning, uh, it's only gonna get worse, that's why we need some, uh, guidance on how to put in streets, where to put in streets, how to get the flow to work, and it isn't just from the planner, it's also, uh, we're getting information from the county. But, planning and zoning is, uh, we're just, uh, regular people, uh, who were appointed to this position because we volunteered for it. Uh, we've got a couple engineers, an architect, uh, it has worked out well for us, especially, uh, for the past couple of years, because we've had an engineer and the lawyer present for each of our meetings, which is one of the reasons why the legal fees go up. Because it's not a good old boy system here anymore. Uh, we make sure things are done, all the i's are dotted, all the t's crossed. That wasn't always done in the past, but yes, the planner is necessary. We've been begging for it, for, at, uh, planning and zoning, because frankly, we need the help.
Okay, thanks, Russ.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else? Questions, answers? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing now, and let's, uh, you guys have any discussion? Okay, then I'm gonna entertain a motion to accept the budget. Dave? Sharon is the second. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Budget is approved. Thank you all for showing up this evening, we appreciate the input. Get ahold of us, send us emails, and we'll try and, like I said, stay on top of this stuff with you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Okay, Lucas, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. The mayor had sent me an email requesting me to review some agreements from the county. So the first one I have is the county assessor agreement. Looks like you guys are looking to have an assessor, um.
Have the county.
They have the county.
Have the county do the assessment, yes, so I just reviewed it.
Their agreement was rather short, so I added to it with, um, boilerplate provisions, I emailed this to you guys, not sure if you reviewed it. However, I sent it to the county, and I got a phone call from the county.
That was my next question, what did, what did the county say?
The county said, of all the cities in Cass County, Horace is the only one that had an issue with, with the agreement and revised it.
Did you tell them that's why we have a crack shot attorney on our side?
I said it's either that or a young, young punk attorney trying to change the world.
How the boy. Keep him on a straight and narrow, buddy, that's what we want.
Yeah, so, I guess, you have my version, but I'm going to recommend, after, um, talking with a representative from the county, their attorney, that we'll just go with the version that they have, considering all the other cities have signed it. Their concern is, if they take all the ones that are already signed by all the cities in Cass County, and then bring Horace's, and it's completely different, that the county commission is gonna see that and then want all of them changed.
What was your concerns about there?
It's just, it went from this one-page.
Right.
Document, so I just added just boilerplate provisions, and then reviewed, um, some of the, like, they had a statute in there from the North Dakota Administrative Code that was repealed, so that didn't make sense to me to have that in there. And so they replaced it with the new, um, century code, actually, for that one, which was good, so I think they're gonna change that for all the agreements, or I hope they do, otherwise all the cities that did sign it are gonna have an agreement that won't make sense.
This provision right here, or this provision is?
No, it was a.
It's, that, that's, they did switch it, so that's the century code, it was, they had the, no, down, right there.
This one?
Yep, and then go back, it's, it's in the one that I did, too.
Yeah, right here.
It's in two, yep. And so they did put that in there, but, I mean, the other stuff I have in there, it, it basically just cleaned it up, and then it added, like I said, the, the provisions that we put in all of our agreements that protect the city in case something does, does go wrong, but in this instance, it's between the city and the county. I mean, you're, you're both basically working for the same team. Um, so I don't see issues with the original one, I just think that it, it probably should've been drafted differently. And they should've put more time into it, and that's gonna be the same situation for that, uh, the planning agreement, too. However, the, um, planning office has not gotten back to me as far as whether they're okay with the changes we made.
Lucas, if I may ask, the original contract that they, agreement they had, is that something they've had in place for years and years?
I think it is, and I think that's why they had that.
Well, that's why there was a, the clause was deleted. Can we send them a bill for this, that way they've got a freebie or something, or split it, I don't know.
We're basically giving them a tool for future, that they can copy.
Yeah, but they're not gonna go with this, they're gonna go with their one.
And, and the county did say that, too, they said they should have drafted it differently. But it's, it's one of those things where I think that they've, like you said, they've had it in place, and.
Obviously, nobody's looked at it.
Yeah, the cities just sign it.
All right. So where are the black sheep?
That's basically what they said.
So you're the only one that actually wrote it?
So yes, um, it, I mean, I would recommend approving it, they did change it, so it, I mean, at least the law is all up to date.
Okay.
And it's just saying that the county will provide you services.
Vance and I have a meeting with Paul tomorrow for lunch to que- to ask him questions about some of the other components of this related to, um, the requirement to have evaluations of all of our lots, and how that will impact us and how that would work and those types of things, before we request approval to do this.
Well, and, I mean, you can wait until, like you said, you have a meeting next Monday, you don't have to approve this tonight, I just wanted you to see, here's what they had, here's what we did.
And the compensation didn't change, that was probably the key.
I, I didn't change anything with that, I assumed you guys had just had.
All squared away there.
Yep.
That someone had met with them to discuss that, and that's why.
So why don't we do that, let's get this queued up for next meeting?
Okay.
And then these guys can have the conversation with Paul.
And update us.
Yeah, and update the sheet, and then we can get on with it.
And then maybe ask them, let them know, let's say, hey, we think that you need to revise this for next year, or, 'cause you're gonna have it for three years, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So yeah, I would just say, we can just table it until.
So Vance, you and Dave can have that conversation with Paul, then, when you guys talk to him, okay?
So we don't need to approve it tonight, we can bring it back next time, okay?
So is that the same for the planning services?
Yeah, I don't, I definitely don't think you should approve this one, because you still don't have.
It's a blank check right now, until we know what.
Yeah, there's no term and there's no compensation.
Right.
So they had sent one.
I'm not sure when they're gonna have that conversation, but, you know, they've made it sound like there was some urgency at one point, but again.
Hallie asked me when you guys are meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know why she, uh, responded, or she never responded back, that's why she wanted to know.
Okay, well, let's, we should pursue that, though, just to make sure that we are, we don't let that one go too long. 'Cause I know she's got some stuff that she wants to do, and.
Well, and that one, that might also take one or two of you meeting with.
Yep.
Representatives of the county, so then you can go over.
Right.
The, the term and then the, the payment schedule, but yeah, like I said, again, it's just.
But that's kinda why we wanna know what the next queue up is, I mean, is it us going in there, or who, who's on first type of thing now to proceed? I know we got this from them, but we didn't get any numbers from them, so I'm not sure if we're supposed to.
And I didn't know if it was you guys that were going in.
So, that was my question, that I fired back to Jason and Hallie today.
Councilman Schmidt sends an email.
Okay.
I'm assuming we'll see something tomorrow.
Guys, you gotta, you, you can't put a no number, and then you gotta give us, what do you charge?
Unless they wanna fire you zero, that's cool.
Wow, we'll pay, we'll pay you zero. Come on, Cory, five bucks, eh?
You can put a number, maybe yours can put a number.
Go.
Hallie told, told us in my office that, uh, you're looking, and again, this is not in writing.
Nope.
But this is over the phone, eight hundred dollars a month, some months it may be nothing. So it's.
So eight hundred dollars for a month for, when she's engaged in what, in doing those addressing?
Yes, and it's likely that there'll be many months with no charge.
Correct.
But again.
So there must be, there must be an X number of hours, the eight hundred dollars, just X number of hours, so that's kinda where I, my question was to Hallie and Jason, was to say, tell us what, what rate, I'm assuming there's a rate.
And I don't think they know for sure.
Give us a dollar.
That's probably why they sent it blank, of course, if they knew for sure, they wouldn't pay a dollar amount of that.
So what Hallie will probably need to do is just kinda figure out, if you average out, like, just say six months, how much time does she actually spend on, I'll call our stuff? Then you can probably get a, get a gauge on how many hours we're talking here, and then we can get a little better handle on, you know, say, eight hundred dollars.
Well, and then she could draft the agreement to say not to exceed X number of dollars or something.
And that would be better.
Per month, not to exceed, whatever, I mean.
No, that's what I mean, but we don't wanna look like we're expecting eighty a week, hours a week either, you know, that's not the point here.
And again, it's something to be very difficult to, for our office to do, so, you know, you've gotta look for outside help sometimes.
And this one, absolutely, good grief.
Absolutely, we have no choice.
After she sat and explained it to us, it was like, uh-huh. Right, Russ? Yeah.
I mean, we don't expect them to overcharge us, but.
No, but.
They're gonna give them how much to budget anyway.
So, okay, then we'll wait for emails back on that. So, let, Lucas, why don't you just put, just queue up these two for the agenda for their next meeting, and let's see if we can get this hammered out by then, okay?
Sounds good.
The one will just be paperwork, the other one will just be a numbers game, to see what we can come up with there. Okay, excellent. You got one more in the pipe here?
Yep, the, the final one I have is a social media policy, with the city's use of social media such as Facebook, figured it was time to get a policy in place. And this is bas- basically in place to protect the city. We have other cities that are having issues with Facebook with comments that are being posted by, um, citizens that are inappropriate. And so the city wanted to know if they could delete those comments, and so this basically says what the comments, what kinda comments should be posted and should not be posted on the Facebook page, and basically says that. There's also an internal policy, so if any of the city's employees are responding, that they know, you're a representative of the city, you have to watch what you say. And it's, like I said, it's, it's supposed to protect the city, it's something that I think, I would suggest putting it on the website and then putting it on Facebook. Like there's.
Yep.
A, a page on there somewhere where you can, I would just put the first page on that, on Facebook.
Given this being an internal policy, too, don't we need a document that we give to each employee and have them sign as well?
We definitely can.
Wouldn't it get, and, would it get included in the employee handbook?
Right, in future, but if we're starting it, yes, we gotta get, we gotta get everybody's signature, so, can you make one that we can?
Yep.
That internal portion.
What do we need to adopt this?
I just wanted to present it to you guys, so you could review it and, and let me know what you think, but.
I mean, this is pretty standard, the stuff here.
Yes, and like I said, it's to protect the city in case there's someone that comments that you wanna take it down.
This has been used in the city of West Fargo.
Yep. So. Yes, Russ?
I'm assuming that, uh, this is no place where, for instance, from planning and zoning, somebody makes a comment, we don't have to respond to any.
this is no place where, for instance, from planning and zoning, somebody makes a comment, we don't have to respond to anything on Facebook. That is correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
You can choose to.
Yeah, it's if you choose to.
Well, I'll choose already, we'll see it, thank you.
No, the city, we don't.
Well, but if, if somebody pulls something that is inappropriate, that matches one of these criteria, then we can go ahead and delete it without repercussion.
No, I just wanted to make sure that I don't have to.
Okay.
You want us to make sure that he's involved?
I'm finally on, I'm finally on the email system. I, I, yes.
Come on man, we'll get you to Facebook.
It's on my phone. But, I just wanna make sure that we will not be required to respond to anything on Facebook.
Nope.
Emails, good.
Yeah, no. No, we're all good there, anything else you want us to discuss on this one, Lucas? You guys got anything on this, I mean, this is kind of a cut and dry thing, and he and I talked about this a little while ago, that this is something we should probably do, just more so that we're all on the same page with this stuff, yes.
I don't wanna spend Lucas's money, but, uh, maybe that while he's doing this, he could also add all the other generic social media that come and go, such as Twitter and.
It's on there.
It's on the top.
It's just a general social media policy.
I just didn't catch it, where.
Including Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and any other online forums that allow the city to share information with the general public.
The umbrella policy.
I know you guys like to get your information out there.
Oh yeah, absolutely, so, okay.
I move that we accept this, uh, social media policy as our second.
Okay. Dave made a, hold it, hold it. Dave made a motion, John made his second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There we go. Okay. Jim, that leads us to you.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, Council, we'll start at the top of the list, I don't know if you got it, Brian, you should have. Alright, so the first thing on the list was the, uh, progress investment number eight for Hager, that was sixteen thousand two hundred dollars for the lining and coating of the collection man of Lost River Lift Station number one, uh, still working on closing all that project. I will just hit the high points here. Uh, Lost River, we have change orders four and five for your consideration, change order number four is for an increase of three thousand dollars sixty one, three thousand sixty one dollars and eighty cents, and this is to pave the final lift of pavement around the entrance island. Uh, there was some concern with that island suffering some damage over the winter through snow removal and whatever else, so, um.
So you're gonna pave it now instead of next year?
Yep, and then we would, we would have to look at how we would do that when the final lift goes on Lost River at a future date, if we would mill that off or, or something else. But, um, I think it's a good idea to do that now, just to save the concrete around that median, there's a lot of decoration and plantings and signage that goes in there, so. Uh, that's, uh, three thou, increase of three thousand sixty one dollars eighty cents, the developer has signed off on, the contractor's signed off on, design engineer's signed off on it, and, um, there's money in the budget for it, so.
In the contingency, right, while we came in under budget anyway, so we're, okay.
We're okay.
Which project, Jim?
Uh, sixteen, seventeen one.
Lost Rivers.
Lost River, and this is change order number four, increase of three thousand dollars, three thousand sixty one dollars and eighty cents. So we would need a motion to approve this.
Can we do both, that one and the second?
Sure, we'll do the second one too. Change order number four, five, is for an increase of twenty four thousand five hundred eighteen dollars and thirty five cents. This adds water and sewer service connections on the far west end of the project. Uh, there was a, the developer was able to, uh, sell lots, smaller lots, and heated water and sewer services to it, so. Uh, this is another one where the contractor's approved, the design engineer has approved, um.
So basically, you're doing this ahead of schedule, is this what I want this coming down to, or is this something that they missed?
Um, they're adding it, the, instead of there being, uh, one service to this lot, he, his, his plan is eventually to do three lots there, and for the pavement and everything that's put on, it just makes more sense to do it now than at a future date, having to dig through the street to connect it.
Right, no, I just didn't know if this was a planned event or if they just.
Well, it was, it was an afterthought planned event.
Got it.
Does that mean he's changed the plat?
All right, that was, that was my question too.
He has not changed the original plat, he's going to work, work on subdividing this soon, is what I'm told, so.
That takes a replat.
Okay, you're right, so we would table this one then. Because.
I mean, isn't that how that works, if he's gonna do that, he's gotta replat that area, right?
He's gotta go back.
He can do no lot splits in this area whatsoever, so it takes a replat.
Okay.
Yep.
That's kinda what I thought, but. Okay, so then we're gonna just do the change order four.
I'll make a motion to approve change order four, change order four, yep.
Second.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, and, who's, John, I think got in there.
Understand, we don't care where he puts plumbing.
Under, yeah, okay.
But, but he, he'll have two connections that don't go anyplace if he doesn't get a replat.
Correct, that's, yeah.
Why, why would you, why would you authorize an increase in plumbing for lots that we don't know if he's gonna use?
Learning curve, alright.
Let's go ask.
Got a motion on the table, it's a first and second, for approving change order four, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright.
Is that, do you want to do a roll call Vance, because it's spending?
Okay, John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Thank you, I forgot. Okay, and then we'll just pass on number five, you can, uh.
Yep.
Get that squared away later.
That's fine.
Okay?
Alright, uh, we will go to improvement district two thousand seventeen two, that is the, uh, SSL. We did receive a letter from the health department late today.
Yep.
That authorizes award, doesn't guarantee the funding, but it authorizes award once the funding is in place. The project has been approved by the, uh, advisory board for the public finance authority, and it goes before the industrial commission on Friday. So, I would assume that at the earliest Friday afternoon, we would know, at the latest Monday, we would know.
Is there any reason that they could stop the project?
Sure.
For what reasons?
They don't approve the law, that would be my, my guess, um, they would probably have to justify it some way, but I don't know why they would. It's gone through all the health departments, gone through the public finance.
It's just.
Not a favorable recommendation.
It's just prudent to get the call saying, you got it, boys, move on.
It's a.
I'm gonna wait until then, I'm not gonna.
Over a million dollars, the public, um, industrial commission has to approve.
Yep.
The law is over a million dollars, and this one is one million two hundred thirty five thousand, hundred forty nine dollars sixty five cents, so.
It sounds like it's a done deal, but it's never done until the signature's on the paper, so we're gonna just wait patiently to get this done.
Exactly.
And that was, when I, when I talked to the public finance authority, that was her assertion, is that this one, it's only going because it was over a million dollars.
Yep.
That's the only reason it has to go, otherwise their recommendation was for it to pass.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, Jim, uh, how, how are we on schedule?
Well, it's gonna be tight. It is going to be tight, we met with the contractor last Friday, or I guess Damon and Kent did. And he's, uh, his plan is to get started as soon as he can, we have contracts signed and returned from him, as soon as we get the, um, blessing from the industrial commission, we can sign them, issue the notice to award, uh, his plan is to get it started as soon as he can. The long lead items are the precast structures, the manholes, that, the concrete, uh, the panels, controls, the pumps, those are all long lead items. Um, there is, he did say that he can get Lost River hooked in, if it be all temporary this year. Um, if weather holds out, gets probably done, if weather doesn't, doesn't completely hold out, there will be, probably be some holdovers into next year.
Yep.
So.
But they can at least get it here, if we had to.
So when you said, a, a long lead item to find that.
Long, it's, uh, it takes a long time to build the pa, oh, six weeks or better, the concrete structures come, uh, precast, and the control panels have to be built, and all the supplies have to put in there, the components, and the pumps are typically not really a, um, on the shelf item.
Yeah, six weeks takes us a little longer than that, really.
How about pipes?
But, if, that stuff can be done, once, you know, once the precast, like, like, take the wet well for example, wet well can be installed, the control panel can be done afterwards, and the, uh, pump, the piping and the plumbing inside that lift station can be done at a later date, so.
They, they could, could do, could continue doing some of the work even after freeze up.
But we are good with Lost River?
Yes, that's what, that's what we've been told so far, so he doesn't see any reason for that. Uh, the contractor does plan on boring most of that, that's why it's subcontractor, he can get in and, uh, bore down, and if we have to do a temporary tie-in, say at Thue Court, that's one of our options, and get it into the gravity system, work its way back to the lagoon for the winter. Uh, right now, we're looking at maybe one house, maybe, I think it's one, maybe two houses from Lost River over the winter.
Okay.
So, um, with another item on that SSL is Hurricane Harvey is affecting everyone, so we have, the supply, resin for the plastic pipe is made in the Houston area, and there could be a shortage of the resin for the piping, so. That is something we do not know the effect of yet, um, there could be a shortage in the middle of the project, but right now they feel they have enough to keep going on it.
That, that, that was my, can we make a hundred percent sure that we get enough so we can get it to, to the lagoons if, if all else fails?
Yes, that, that's the plan, and then there will be a increase because of Harvey, their price increase.
You gotta be kidding me, is that really what?
I kid you not, uh, the increase is, let me find the right sheet here.
No, I don't know what, I don't wanna, I don't wanna know.
It's not bad.
No, it's just, Jim, it's another excuse.
I know it.
You know, it's just corruption, is all it is. I went through this last week with emails that came out, it, it's obscene, it's embarrassing our country, what we, we do to our own people, it's ridiculous.
Uh, the difference is about twenty, twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars eighty-four cents to be, if my math is right, so.
That's a lot of money.
Um, it, I don't think there's any way around it, and I think that we can get that in through the SRF law.
That's, the problem is that we're kind of over a barrel at this point, we, we need it, and we don't have any choice.
That's why they raised the cost.
Yeah.
They know it.
Well.
Russ, what do you got?
If it's, yeah.
I have a question, yeah, a couple of comments back, you may have a couple of houses hooked up this winter yet? Can you have enough flows from a couple of houses to make a sewer line work?
We don't have, we don't have a choice, we have, we, the city told Lost River that they'd have service.
No, but that's not my question, how are you gonna make the sewer line work with two houses hooked up to it? Gotta be a plan, because I don't get enough flows.
There is consideration for that, yeah, I don't, I don't know, we don't, I don't have the plan right in front of me, Russ, but it is being discussed, we have talked about that.
Okay.
I just don't know what the plan is for sure, so, yes, I agree.
A lot of sun pumping.
On the river.
I'm gonna let them talk about that, but we'll keep an eye on it, I know, I hear you. Yep.
Yep.
Gotcha.
So when are we anticipating connection to the Deer Creek Lift Station?
Ideally.
Because if we're just talking about getting it to the lagoon, that's not even really the project, the project really was to connect to that lift station.
Correct, ideally it'll be done in November, the completion date of the project.
We're, we're looking at worst case scenario.
This is, if.
Worst case scenario is you go to the lagoon, best case scenario, we finish the connection.
The connection will be finished if it's this spring, or this fall, or next spring, it just depends on the weather right now. So we can provide service to Lost River through the lagoons, and fini, and if we need to, we can finish that off.
Well, it sounds like it's more than just the weather, it sounds like it's, if the weather holds down, if the piping is enough, if.
There are a lot of ifs.
Yeah, there's, it's not one if, it's about five ifs.
Has Fargo got their end of the, ready to go up there, or we're still in queue for that too?
They're, I think they're in construction right now.
Okay, I haven't driven by there in a while.
Yeah, they were fusing pipe for a couple of weeks there, so.
Yeah, a lot of quick事儿, so.
Sounds.
So yeah, right now, they can't accept it either, as of right now.
I think maybe Sharon's also asking, are we doing all our due diligence to take as much if out of the equation?
Yes, we are trying to push, we're trying to do what we can, we are expediting, you know, we, working on the contracts, we've got the shop drawings, getting all that stuff into production as soon as we can. We're gonna have creek construction conference, uh, first weekend in October, that's the first time, first week to get together, so we are trying to expedite it as best we can with what we're given.
Yeah, I mean, it's understandable that until we get the financing, nothing happens.
Yep.
We can't start getting precast done, or we can't do anything until that financing is done, so this is the, the most crucial step, and that's out of our hands.
I'm sorry, you did comment that maybe this Friday?
Oh, that's when the judicial commission meets, correct, yep, so we should know, I would assume, at worst, we would know Monday, so.
I would hope somebody is making some calls on Friday to ensure some piping and.
I mean, if she can email us the forms that we need to sign, I can get those things signed on Friday if they're ready to go.
I, everything's, everything's in order as far as I know, sorry, but I don't think there's, it's just a matter of, uh, the notice of award and, and that all up. Um, I do believe that they have placed an order for the materials.
Okay.
So I, I think that, don't, that's what I was told, so, cool me on that, but I do believe that that has been started.
Okay, so let's just, we'll, we'll hang loose here then until Friday, and we get the up and down on that, and then we can start moving some other plans forward.
Correct.
Okay. Yes.
So I just have a question on the pricing increase on the product. Did you guys have to update the quote that they were given a way to change what the original quote was for the product?
We didn't have a signed contract with them, they quote, their quote was, uh, it had, I guess, uh, let's see here.
They're also probably gonna use an act of God type situation that, to justify a cost increase if needed.
Yep, uh, due to Hurricane Harvey PVC and HDP, prices are public, subject to manufacturer terms, and that's what we were, were dealt with.
Are there any alternate sources?
Unfortunately, there are not, uh, fusible PVC, nine hundred PVC is the pipe, and it's kind of a sole source product. There's, uh, one company that manufactures these underground solutions, and DSG, the coal supply group, is the regional person for that. And the other equivalent is a certalock pipe, where they put a restraint in the bell end of the pipe, and that isn't the same thing. And since we're crossing underneath the Cheyenne, uh, we would prefer to have, there be no joints in any of that, so, that's kinda what, what we were given, so.
Plus, there's some, in these projections, there's always some contingency.
Yes.
Just in cases.
Yep.
So.
Uh, let's see.
Then answer what you're, yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yep. Okay, uh, remote water meters have been receiving solicitations from various agencies, those will be, have to be in by the thirtieth of September. We have a public info meeting scheduled for, uh, next Monday at six thirty at city hall. We'll have to discuss that, Brian, sometime, hopefully wanna do, what kind of information you need. Uh, stormwater policy, we do have, uh, the comments from the attorney, we are reviewing them as we, as we speak. If you go down the next sheet, Brian, we'll skip ahead to the pedestrian crossing, there should be one plan sheet in there, I provided you with the scope of work basically sheet, I'll go down again. Uh, down again.
Oh.
Right there. So that's the basic plan sheet for the, uh, pedestrian crossing, I did get a note back from the school that they are not opposed to the project, so that's a good sign. Um, the schedule or the plan for that is to solicit quotes, uh, starting tomorrow, if we get approval tonight. We would receive quotes until the twelfth of October, hopefully award at the sixteenth meeting, and have a completion date of the, uh, eighteenth of November. I did make some calls today to see what the interest was in it, there were a couple that were interested in it, and a couple contractors said they were pretty busy this time of year, so I think we'll just have to see what we get.
Okay.
Um, I do have, I do have the full set of plans here, and, uh, the quote documents, if you do want to take a look. Uh, the estimate, when I went back through with the plans, was total project cost of around forty-seven thousand, including all of the contingencies admin and legal, it's roughly about thirty-six thousand dollars worth, so, that's within our, under our limits to quote, so, I'll get, uh, three, four, or five quotes, and we'll present them at that time. So, I guess I'd need the direction to, to solicit the quotes for this project.
We've talked about this before, guys, I mean, do you, any further discussion on this, or should we just?
No, I mean, I'll make a motion to approve it, it's, uh, I think it's a, it's necessary.
It's a little overdue.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's overdue, but absolutely necessary, and I recommend that we take the funding out of the, the highway fund.
They would come out of the highway fund, right?
So.
Yeah. Okay, so, I'll get a, get a motion?
Second.
Okay, Sharon did a motion, Dave did a second, and I'll go down the list, John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let's get that, let's get that in the, in the pipe here and get that done. Be a good question.
Alright.
Okay?
Well, hold on, all right.
Yes.
We, we just approved to do this, not the service band funds.
Correct. Correct. Well, okay. We, we still do the bits, right?
We do quotes, we're gonna quote this. You're approving us to solicit quotes.
We get the guys to spend some money anyway.
No, I get that.
Okay.
Let's see here. The other one is the Maple Drive, Maple Lane. We are working on those plans yet. There's still work with a, uh, some of the drainage has kind of been a little more difficult. So I see that you've had, they've been patching up there, so.
Well, I didn't know how long, so I asked those guys to come out because some of my neighbors had complained about them major potholes all summer, so.
We're looking at the, the aerator from that pond on the south side. That's taken a little bit, so I'll have a better update for you next week on that.
Is this more and more likely looking as a two thousand eighteen though?
Just with what I'm hearing from the contractors, yeah, I'm kind of thinking it is.
Okay.
I, 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 we have to look at how we wanna do it too. Because if it's a, we might look at just quoting it if it's, if it's, uh, less expensive enough or low enough dollar roll, then we can just quote it. Try to speed it up a little bit, but that's something I gotta, I gotta look at this week is kind of my thoughts, so. Um, a truck route, we haven't got any more information on that as to if there's any more changes to the benefit area. That's something we could, should probably look at. Although I suppose that's not for this year's construction, no.
Probably not, but it's something we're gonna have to talk about to try and get that in the queue. We should, Brian, we got a meeting next, my Thursday engineering thing?
Next Thursday? I'm not sure that I'm gonna be here next week. This, uh.
No, it's fine, I'll look, I just thought if you knew off the top of your head.
No, I'm fine.
I was gonna ask Jim if you remember what the estimate was on that. I thought it was spending.
I, I don't, I don't, it's been, it's been a while, I apologize. I don't remember that number.
I think so too, I thought it was spending, yeah.
Yeah, October fifth, we're supposed to meet at noon, go over some of this stuff. If you're not gonna be around, that's not this week, it's next week, I am sorry. A week off, man.
Okay, yep. Okay.
Okay. The other two that we need to do something with are the, we have received a letter from Olivia's Acres about connections to the city. And we have received a letter from Horseshoe Bend about connecting to the city for sanitary sewer service. We've been talking about this being two thousand eighteen construction, work in the winter. But if we wanna do anything with that, uh, we need to get a survey done before snow flies. And it's something that we can do now, work on this winter, but we do need to get that done before snow. So something to think about. We, I don't think we need to work on it or act on it tonight, but.
How much time is that gonna take? I mean, if we gave the approval and somebody starts on Monday or talk, how many days?
I would say that it takes two days to get a utility locate. So I would say you could probably do it in three days. Survey is probably hanging me for saying that.
The question is, do we need to, do we need to approve a, you know, an engineering survey? Because we're gonna have to spend the money to go get that information, right?
You would have to direct us to, to, uh, to start the, the survey on it.
Or could that be just part of the. Just approve them to go.
Jim, what you might wanna, Russ goes, can we approve it tonight or is that something we should probably have it drafted up first?
We have a meeting next week.
That's what I'm saying.
That's why I'm saying.
Let's just.
Draft up the proposal.
So you want a proposal on both of those two for.
For getting the survey done.
Cause you're right, we want to get that done before the snow falls.
I'll just try to get your proposal for.
Visto in that too?
Well, Visto would be, we'd be going alongside Visto, so.
Yeah.
So we would have Visto's, Olivia's Acres and.
Horseshoe Bend, yep.
Cause those are three areas that have requested service.
Yep, let's, let's include all three of them.
Okay.
How, if you had any more conversation with Ken Stokes?
I have not. He hasn't stopped.
I know he's got an annex in.
That's right.
But it's right down there, it would make sense for him to get involved in this plan as well.
Right.
Why are you looking at me like that?
Uh, you took me to, you missed, you got out of my files, which one you were talking about?
Where's this at?
Southwest corner.
Southwest of Olivia.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so queue that up for us the next meeting, Jim, we'll get that done.
Oh, no, I understand, I just.
But does he know that that annexation process isn't just done with the way we want?
Yeah, so would I.
It's on plan, it's on.
Yeah, no, no, planning zoning doesn't do annexation.
No, but if he knows the process.
No, but you know, it's with his.
But I'm just saying, if he wants to do that, then it's something that he should be thinking about doing before next spring.
Yep.
Right, cause we can't, our services without.
Correct. Can't be included in the improvement district if it's not in the city.
We'll talk to him.
Okay.
That's just, that's a wrench already in phase two that I'm not liking.
Will he come to the planning and zoning for review?
Annexation? No.
No.
No, that's, that's a total, absolutely totally one hundred percent legal process.
Okay. Jim, that's it?
That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, okay, so around the portfolios. Sharon, you got anything you wanna discuss with us this evening?
Well, I have an update from Jason Benson on the access of County seventeen to the south. To fill in the ditch, big hole in the road that had been created by the diversion project. So I spoke with them a week ago and they were going to, uh, they, once the project got stopped because of the judge's order, that meant they couldn't do anything. So even though the contractor had mobilized equipment and had planned to have the road open, all work had stopped because all the money was frozen. So the county and all concerned parties had to go meet with the judge last Friday to express concern and express the need for something to be done so that there, they opened that road up to the south and so that this crazy drive around is not going to be there. So the county is proposing a, they called it a bypass road to the west. So a small, like, they can't fill in the ditch is what Jason said. We can't fill in the ditch because if we filled in the big hole, we don't have enough time to compact it and have it, and have it be at the condition that people could be driving over it so we could pave it. Because what will happen with the snow and the road is it's going to, we know what's gonna happen. It's gonna slough and then it's gonna be a bigger problem than this. So instead, we're proposing a bypass road to the west that would have a slower speed limit, say maybe thirty-five, you know, fifty-five down to thirty-five around and then back to fifty-five. But at least it would, it won't go exactly straight and go around a little bit. They'd probably do it to travel for the winter and then decide what's going to happen in the spring. Are they gonna pave it? Is it gonna be a permanent road? There's a lot of unanswered questions at this point. So anyway, they went to the judge. They didn't get an answer. They're having another meeting with the judge on Friday of this week to get the go-ahead to spend the money to do this temporary fix to the road. And I guess after they meet with the judge on Friday, then hopefully they'll have an answer next week and get the actual go-ahead, to go ahead with this plan so that the road will be open. So his, his answer is, we're hoping to have the road open by the middle of November. If we were able to start on Monday, because we met with the judge and get the go-ahead Friday, it's gonna take us at least six weeks. Well, that takes us to the middle of November. So at that point, we'll then have time to decide, is this gonna be because the, with the governor, working with the governor of Minnesota and trying to come up with a solution and no one knows what that is. They don't know if that's gonna be the permanent road, the temporary road. They, they just don't know. So this is the plan, is to have something that's available to go north and south. So yeah, then we miss the sugar beet season for sure, but they hope to catch the end of the corn season and the end of the soybean season. But in the worst case, it'll be something. And so that's kind of where we are. We won't know till Monday what happened this Friday now. Cause it seems like every Friday they have a meeting with the judge. So that's kind of the update there.
Our fingers crossed so they can get this done.
Yeah, I said, you know, I explained to him, I said, we know it's not you. We know you're doing everything you can and all you can do is tell us, give us the information.
Maybe they should do a meeting on Monday so they can actually accomplish something.
Judge's decision.
You have a question in the back?
Yeah. If, for some, hopefully they do get this bypass or whatever you wanna call it. If for some reason they don't, can we ask them or sign it or something? Because being the off-road to that loop, I live on seventy-second there, we have seen probably double the traffic. I think people don't realize they can't get around that way.
Yeah.
So it's been a really long summer traffic.
Mm-hmm.
Plus we have three houses for sale on the street and so everything else.
I think we should, yeah, ask the contractor. Shouldn't be a problem.
Let's see what's gonna get fixed.
Well, I hope so.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're kidding.
The county seems to anticipate that they'll have something open by, by winter. That was what they had promised.
Yeah.
And, um, he, Jason said the last time they met with the governor, the first question out of his mouth was, when is that road gonna be open? So it's certainly high on the governor's mind that that road is open because it impacts access to all of those properties to the south. And again, hopefully next Monday I'll have the update from whatever happened this Friday when they have their meeting, so.
Yep, let's hope it's positive.
And so that was it. And I have one other thing, which is this, uh, MetroCave announced a training program. It's called Train the Trainer. It is MetroCave along with the National Traffic Incident Management Responder Training Program is announcing a Train the Trainer session in the FM area on Tuesday, October twenty-fourth at the Clay County Joint Public Works Facility in Moorhead. It's open to the public and is part of the alternate routes and TIM Guidebook Development taking place in the area. So anyone's interested, we'll post it on our website and give them who to contact to our SVP. But it is about the alternate routes program. So in the event that there's an incident, the alternate routes program would provide guidance as to how to get somewhere if there's a road blocked off. So if I twenty-nine is closed in somewhere, then what are the alternate routes? If I ninety-four is closed off because something happens, here's the alternate routes. So that's what the, the program's about. And so they involve the fire departments and folks from the sheriff's department and all the local, everybody was invited to attend. And so they're having this, you know, training program for incident reporting.
Perfect.
So we'll post it.
Okay, sounds good. Dave, you got lined up tonight?
Uh, nothing much, just, uh, wanna introduce Matea is our new assistant city auditor, as you all see, so. She started today, so say hi, introduce yourself.
Hi.
Met these guys too.
Oh, sorry.
Met these guys too.
Hi, yeah, we'll get there.
We've been, we've been in training all day and she's progressing really well.
So you give us a little, tell us a little bit more about yourself?
Sure, I'm originally from Doubles Lake and then I've lived in Fargo probably for over ten years. Um, I was in dental school before, um, went back to school for accounting. And then this is my third job in accounting, so.
Well, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it, all right. Brian, you got the long list here.
Well, two of my items fell off the list, so, uh, wastewater state approval is already taken care of. Uh, Jimmy already talked about that. Uh, the regional water management, um, just raising awareness, we were invited to participate in a region. We, we're in part of the Regional Wastewater Management Work Group, uh, for the, uh, metro area that we're participating in. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting, I think in October for that as well. Uh, we have now been invited to a regional water management, uh, work group as well. Uh, so it's same sort of, uh, impetus to have a common discussion across the area about water manager, water, water needs, water manager, et cetera. It's gonna be interesting, just listen to this one. I don't know if there's any action, specific action that we need to take at this time, but it'll just be interesting to hear what they have to say and, uh, and what direction other towns in the metro area or communities in the metro area are considering. So, uh, at this point, we're just, you know, wanna seat at the table so we can be a part of that discussion and hear what's going on and have a voice. If, should that arise, but at this point, I don't anticipate any action coming out of that.
When is that one?
Uh, that is, uh.
Usually October?
Not next week. Not tomorrow, Wednesday, this week? Is it this week? Oh, good gravy. Okay, I got him to keep, keep me on track task.
Wednesday at one, is it?
Yep, yep, you're right. Right, okay, so we're meeting with them. Uh, the water tower inspection, uh, the water tower inspection has, was completed last week, two weeks ago.
No, first part of August.
You, you were waiting for the report.
Yes, we haven't, we haven't received the report.
Well, it, it just, well, at least arrived in draft today, so.
Yes.
But the point, the point of the matter is, I'm sorry?
Did you get the email from Adam with the numbers on it? Okay, cause he texted me that.
So I don't, I don't know that we're ready at this point, but the point of the matter is that there are going to be some action items that are gonna come out of this uh, that we will have to address, uh, in some engineering project in the near term to address some of the issues that were, arose from that inspection. So we'll be reviewing that in an upcoming meeting. And the Cass County Addressing Agreement, we already talked about, Lucas already talked about that, so that's it for me.
Do we wanna put in the minutes, Brian, that we talked about Greyhawk with, in the wilds, just so that I forgot to mention that.
I can provide a, an update on that. So, uh, we met, uh, this last week, last Friday, uh, with West Fargo Planning, uh, City Administration and City Engineering, uh, talking about, uh, there's a couple of different action items. We're, they're working on a memorandum of understanding between the, the Wilds ten development, uh, and Greyhawk development. Uh, there's some water, storm water, uh, just making sure that there's understanding of how, what the design is and that there, if there are issues in water management in that area, how we're gonna handle it. So there, we're, we're working on some details of that, uh, MOU. Uh, and we're working on specific plans that will mitigate the impact to the residents of Greyhawk but yet, uh, take care of some of the, the water, storm water, uh, issues that have been raised by residents. So there's storm water concerns that the lower people are concerned about, been really issued at this point, so. Uh, there are ongoing discussions, I think, uh, the, the West Fargo engineers took some action items. Any, anything that I missed out on that?
No, no, I think that everything, that we're still in the planning and, uh, we are gonna review the documents that they provide us.
The good news is, is they are, they are planning to absorb, the, the Wilds ten development is planning to absorb the cost of the, putting in the piping uh, and the water volume that they anticipate. Uh, they're just, they were concerned about us taking Greyhawk and potentially splitting up those lots so that do they, do we have to worry about more water going in? And it's a, uh, there is no foreseeable future plan to split those lots up, so, you know, plan with the water volume that there is today. So, uh, there's, so that was kind of their sizing question that they wanted us to be able to answer. And then working on the details of where the storm water can move out of there, uh, that area. So they're, good discussion and it's glad, I'm glad that West Fargo was willing to work with us, uh, to work through some of those storm water, uh, issues. So, uh, that just shows that we've got a good working relationship with them, so that's a positive thing.
Definitely.
Any discussion on streets?
We briefly, just really, really briefly talked about the, you're talking about the Ninth Avenue?
The Ninth Avenue, but also there's some streets in Greyhawk right now that dead end and one of them.
Correct.
We have, we have a previous agreement with West Fargo that they're hooking up to.
They, that, that is in the plan to have that hookup. But then the idea is that if we can at least get a gravel road of some sort on Ninth Avenue that would provide an access or an exit route to the south for the Wilds ten to get to sixty-fourth instead of going through Greyhawk, that would be preferable. Even though the access will be there, yeah.
Well, I'm more interested in it going north than going south.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, it's all paved, it's all paved going north, but you get to a certain point and people are gonna wanna go south because I, I could drive this long way through Ninth Avenue or I've got a quarter mile down a gravel road to get to sixty-fourth. But there's gravel, so it's, yeah. But we did have a quick conversation about it, no decision was made, so, but, but.
But that, but that further, if, if that's the case, if they're gonna go south. But that, but that further, if, if that's the case, if they're gonna go south to come down to Sixty-Fourth to get down to County Seventeen so they can turn left and go north, that doesn't help our traffic situation. In fact, it makes it worse.
They're not gonna do that.
No, that's for emergency vehicle usage pretty much.
We're gonna use it to go north to Fifty Second.
It is very preliminary. There are different circumstances and different situations that they would talk about. But if nothing is, you know, it's just, are you open to the idea? And we were, we're open to the idea.
Well, it becomes more important if the county or West Fargo ever does work on that roundabout and they shut that thing down and/or when Fargo is working on Fifty Second Avenue and that lift station over there by the river and as soon as they start taking that out of the equation, then having some alternate route to get north because you won't be able to use a roundabout, you gotta have something. I mean, otherwise we're forced to go down to Seventy Sixth Avenue and go west to come up like County Fifteen or you have to keep going south.
Take a hundred, yeah.
And we're, we're, we're in a, and you know, we have this conversation all the time. We're in a bad spot because we don't control the access to the north. That's all Fargo and West Fargo that controls that intersection. So they do work on their part of the road and we're out.
One of the meetings we had with Jason Benson was what their county was trying to decide is whether doing the two bridges on Fifty Second, whether they're gonna, whether they're gonna go ahead and do the third bridge on County Road Seventeen at the same time.
Well, I think they're looking out the roundabout about only putting a right turn lane in, but that's even just to do that is gonna block off most of that roundabout.
That would be so sweet.
It would be nice, but that's about all. I mean, we've really pushed from the city of do not change the roundabout, please, it works fantastic. Don't take it out, don't move it, but they do wanna put that right turn. And so if they do that, then we're still gonna get the impact of the destruction of that, but.
Yes.
And we know the bridge over the Cheyenne, um, County Seventeen has to get done at some point. I mean, it has to, because any plan to widen that road bottlenecks at that spot, it, it has to get done.
Yeah, but you know that won't happen until the city hits five thousand people, we have to do it.
They're gonna wait for us to do it.
Well, it's just, it's ugly no matter when you look at doing it. And that's just a really bad, complicated project.
So that's, that's all I have.
Okay. John, what do you got?
I have no report.
Get on the ball, man.
I'll have one for you. That's what you got for planning, it's only tomorrow night.
Attaboy. Alright, no problem there. Okay, so on my list here, I got the Future Horse Developments Plan. Basically, that's that comprehensive plan, guys. We need to talk about that a little bit more. We discussed it about a month and a half ago. Um, we need to start moving on with it, okay? I know we had some discussions back and forth here, but, um.
Is this tied in with a planner?
No, this will be, well, with our contract planner right now.
This will be a separate, this is that contract to develop a long-range plan is all, right?
Yep. This is that, this is part of that contract that he wrote up for us.
Yes.
Okay, and what I wanna do is I wanna execute that.
Okay.
Okay, so that we can get this in place and if we can get, uh, get this started, then we start getting on with those other parts of the planning that we've been discussing. Start figuring out what we need for second and third, more to help you right now, I think, to get that ballgame going while he's doing this. And then we can worry about what we, how, how much time do we want him to put here and where, okay?
So is that something you wanna review for next Tuesday, Monday then, for final approval? You want us all to review it, go through again?
Yeah, have you sent that out though?
You did a long time.
Is it the old one?
This is, this is the original one that we sent out back in May. Not May, I mean June or something. I mean, it was, it's, it was a summer. It was a summer. Okay.
But I don't think it had, if I'm trying to remember it.
No.
I, I'll look, I just wanna confirm. That's what the expectation is, is we review it and by next week.
Right, there's been no changes to that?
By next week, we review it and either move forward or reject it or whatever.
Okay. I don't wanna wait much longer with this, guys, so we need to get on with it.
Yep.
Um. I agree too. I just wanna know that we're gonna need to review it.
Okay, so then queue it up for next, uh, next meeting.
Okay.
The, the only issue I have is this is the only option we've been presented. I find it very tough and no offense to anybody that you're giving me one option. I'm not an expert in this, Corey.
I'm going with what other people told me, John.
But we're going with what one person said. That's, that's, yeah, I would like to see us look at what other options there are. Or does this need to be scaled back a little bit in step? We've been asked to be due diligence and fund, do, do our due diligence and funds. I think we need to do the same thing with this.
Okay. Anybody else got any comments on that?
John, can you just pass that down?
I need to read it again. I don't wanna say anything without reading it.
I mean, I think the, the only, I know the only thought I have on it was, had something to do with the dollar amount. And I think I have to reread it anyway, but. I mean, I know from the MetroCOC side, and I don't remember what the dollar amount of this, doing this was, but.
Eighty thousand.
You know, when MetroCOC does comprehensive plans and they have two of them that they're currently working on, both are for cities in Minnesota, but you know, know that that's really relevant, but they charge anywhere on average a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So it's similar to, I mean, it's a comprehensive plan. It's an update to a plan that is already existing in some of these cities. So I, I would imagine, and I'm, I'm talking off the cuff because I haven't, have to look at this again, but I'd imagine it's similar to what we're asking them to do. And so based on that, eighty thousand is a fair number to do that work. So that's the only comment I have towards it.
And to address your, your comment, John, on this a little bit, I understand where you're coming from and why we're using interstate here is because they'll be able to get going right away. That's part of one of the, one of the reasons why I'm, I'm kind of, uh, asking on this one because we need to get somebody moving on this sooner than later. We've probably gone long enough here. They don't wanna get so much further behind. We have too many things in front of us that this, this is like the plan that we need. We've been talking about this and this is the first step that the city needs to take, so. But.
Corey, could you just resend that to everybody so we have it fresh? I know I have, I don't wanna keep, I don't wanna go digging for it.
I will do that. I'll send it to all of you. Okay. The only other thing I had in mind here was gonna ask about, Lucas, is there such a thing as a tree ordinance or some sort of resolution that cities implement where they come up with like a, a whole issue on how, how?
The answer is yes, because we got it in the Tree City USA, we were looking at that grant in the spring.
Okay.
They had a proposed tree ordinance for, um, cities to, um, implement.
Okay.
Was that one for, was it based on safety, saying that if it's overhanging over a sidewalk or a street, so you can come in and cut it down?
Everything. It was like to be a tree city. They had everything from planting trees along the boulevard to, I mean, it was like all in con- it was, it was long. So I'll pull it up and send it and we can all look at it.
The reason of.
West Fargo has a forester and they're supposed to have a forester.
Yeah, I saw that.
You have to have a person, you have to have a designated person, yeah.
Anyway, it's just.
So is your concern, is this stemming off of the residents or neighbors?
Yeah, just to kind, it's more to start thinking about addressing something like this because as we grow as a city, we wanna start talking about how we're gonna handle the trees, so how are we gonna put some more ordinances in place so that when they do these new developments, what are we gonna recommend for trees and that kinda thing? This'll all fall with that.
Oh, there's a whole list of, there's a whole list of like, these are the recommended trees based on the area, yeah, they have all that stuff.
Because you see how many trees we've got around here out there and I'm just figuring we're gonna have to put some trees in at some point, you know?
Well, it's also preserving what there is.
Yeah.
What makes sense and.
Exactly.
Not all are worth, you know, people get caught up in, oh, you can't cut down trees, you can't cut down shelter bells, but.
Yeah.
There's good ones and there're bad ones.
Exactly, but that's just something we should start looking at that because as we grow, we wanna make sure.
I mean, that's potentially an entire chapter in your ordinances.
Plus that also affects commercial too, so when developments come in, there's requirements for what we expect them to put in for landscaping and that.
Yeah, and then it has to do with pest control for the beetles, like they don't recommend ash trees anymore and so there's, I mean, and there's a whole list of them, so I don't know, I'll send that along, cause I think.
Yeah, cause I think that's a, the discussion we're gonna have here a little bit more as we go into the future, so.
I'll get Plaid News only to do some work on that as well.
Okay. Yes.
I do recommend you do that. Um, I was on the Nine Hundred City Forestry Commission and, uh, was part of the City Tree USA process. And you have to redo that because, for example, in our neighborhood, even though we're called Maple Lake, the ground does not support maple law at all.
Really? Cause they're all dead, the ones that they gave us.
Going through that whole process and having some basic guidelines, so that when a developer comes in, he doesn't plant what was at his low bid and it may not be suitable for our area and/or and/or.
Right, soils are different, they're not so big.
What I'm trying to say, Corey, is I'm really encouraged that you do something as the city on that line. And I don't know if you need another forestry commissioner, you know, two or three volunteers.
I think you just get it.
We're gonna lead her, John. But, but I do recommend that, that something happens on that line.
Yeah.
As people, but, but the big thing is so that we don't get short-changed.
Exactly, that's what I'm.
People start planting.
Exactly, that's kinda, that's kinda the whole point here, being we know some of this stuff is coming. We can start getting ahead of the game with some of these different ordinances so that when they, we start bringing developments together, this is how we wanna lay it out.
Or they don't plant stuff where you're going to, um, to move it or you want use and waterfalls and stuff too.
Yeah, so.
A friend of mine moved into a new place and, and the city comes out and plants the trees. The homeowner doesn't plant trees.
He watches.
He gets to watch them and take care of them. It's the city that actually does the placement.
In some places, it's like that very much.
And they're charging for it too.
Yeah.
So we have.
On the boulevards, yeah.
Yeah, and it's, it's a cool idea.
Some cities provide the tree park, paying back from the chance they put on the boulevard too.
Yeah, some do that too.
Anyways.
Okay, that was all I had. Vance, it leads us to you.
Just so you know, you already required it. Sorry, Vance, I didn't mean to step on your toes there. Seventeen point eight point eight landscaping, the planting of trees and shrubs of an appropriate species and at appropriate locations are required in all new plats of subdivisions.
Okay, so we have a generic clause in there to come out of?
Well, no, and then it, it goes on.
Well, we don't list specific trees, right? We just say that appropriate, correct?
I'm just letting you know that you do have it.
Okay.
So instead of an ordinance saying the, the tree type, which might change, we have a list.
We're gonna have more.
Okay, Lucas, who says, who determines appropriate?
That you do, and that's what I'm saying. You guys have a list that will be kept on file in City Hall. And then they come in and ask Vance, what kinda trees can we plant? And then Vance goes to his list.
Vance, you're the greenery guy, man.
I'm just saying, maybe we just revamp this one instead of.
I mean, okay, but I mean, we should have some type of a boilerplate that we go off of that other cities use. If it's that generic, I doubt, but I mean.
But maybe that's not all bad.
Well, but it could change, obviously.
But I think it needs to go with developer agreements and things like that. If we're sending them out to developers and you know, this becomes part of your, here's this thing, what, everything goes together. You get all the tree.
Russ, is it, isn't that on the checklist? What's that, trees?
Appropriate trees.
Well, that'd be the language you'd use. I thought you had files, you said earlier.
Lucas, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to talk, but let's just, we'll move on here, guys. All I wanna do is just get the conversation started.
Well, we started.
Yeah.
You ready to do a rabbit hole?
Yeah, thanks, Corey.
No problem. I can do it again, just watch. Okay.
Should we look at the financials for, uh, through August?
That'd be awesome.
Alright, okay, for those of you in the audience, we're gonna take a look at, uh, uh, general, I have, uh, four point one in the general fund checking account. Accounts receivable means stands for the amount that of, uh, utility bills set out last month. Uh, investments, we have three hundred and thirty-six grand in there. Uh, as a refresher for those who may have forgotten, the Sleepy Hollow Riverdale Fund was money that was, that, that's funds that are set aside for improvements to the road and probably the bitches. I haven't read the contract for years, but that money was sent to me by the Cass County Auditor and it's being held by me, so whenever they want to improve, uh, whatever they want out there, we, I pony up for that.
Only up to that amount?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yes. We have, uh, payroll taxes payable and we have a healthy general fund balance of one point one four three. Highway fund is healthy. The social security fund shows a deficit, but that's accumulation of, uh, uh, monies that I've owed, that I owe for the year. Uh, city's share of specials is funded through the county. We have an old, old gaming fund balance of thirty-five hundred and forty-one dollars. That's been on the books forever. We no longer have gaming in this town. It's been taken over by, uh, such organizations as the Lions Club and that type of thing, but at one time we did, many, many years ago. Sales tax, fund balance, boy, I'm liking this one. Today, I received, uh, ACH transfer money for thirty-four thousand. So we now have about ninety-three grand in that account as we speak. I'm projecting that by the end of the year, we'll have a hundred and fifty thousand in there. Isn't that just friggin' great?
Yeah.
And this started in May. That's been, uh, April one, yeah.
It can only be used for certain things.
No, no licking chops here.
My, my question is, how do we know if it's gonna go consistently this or is there anything to attribute?
I'll check my crystal ball.